Six thirty, so we're gonna call meeting to order. I think so. Ready? We're ready. Um, we'll stand for our flags too.
Five to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it.
So our intro here, the public comments, the primary school this board encourages public input. A person wanting to provide public comment will need to complete and submit an intent to speak for the board secretary by one AM on Monday, on the day of the board meeting, sorry. Public comment is limited to this place on the agenda, not to exceed a total of thirty minutes for all commenters. A person given public comment is limited to an established time limit of three minutes, while speakers may during public meetings offer objective criticism of school operations and program, the board will not hear personal complaints concerning district personnel nor against any person connected with the school system. I'm not sure we have any down. Okay, so we can skip that part a bit and jump into our monthly items. And first up is our approval of our minutes from July.
I'll make a motion to approve the July twenty ninth board retreats and the July fifteen paper session minutes.
Second?
There's a motion to approve and second, any discussion? Okay.
So on item number six D, when we're talking about school assignments, the only thing I saw on there was there was nothing said. And what we decided to do is no school assignments and that it could be done independently. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Yeah.
On the six I, it talks about the exit surveys, I'm pretty sure that's what it is. And what we did also agree on is that OSBA have, I don't remember the exact name, but they're targeted surveys, but that we also agreed to use that or some other form of that. And the last thing about that is I don't see anything in the minute about our discussion about voting. I don't see anything about that. There's a time of discussion. Was it close? Oh, there was a time of discussion, I'm changing the language in the agreement, when a board member needs to abstain from voting. Right, so that will be down when we get to that. But we're just talking about that was in the minute. Yes, that's what I just read to you.
Six P.
Six P. Six here. Oh, wow. We'll leave it again. Thank you very much. Thank you. So are you suggesting that the minutes be updated to include the items that you're referring? I don't know what burnable protocol is, it's just when I was going over it, I just noticed that there wasn't too much said about these things, and these are our limits.
Yeah, we don't go into too much of the detail. What you described there on the first item is accurate. You mentioned, what was the first thing you talked about?
The first thing was the school assignments.
Yeah, I mean, that was the agreement on there. The second piece, there are a little two different items. The, you mentioned the exit surveys, we briefly touched on those in the room and the agenda tonight. The second piece was a part of the superintendent evaluation conversation, which, yes, we're gonna try to use the target evaluation as a part of the entire superintendent evaluation mission.
Thank you.
Will, in these minutes, clarify those three things.
Okay. Do we get a vote? And one was in support of approving the minutes? Yeah? Okay, so we'll have a vote recorded as five?
Did you ask for a vote, Aaron?
Oh, all in favor. Sorry. All in place, sorry. All in favor, five, zero. I'm jumping all over the place, sorry, guys. Okay. Next on the agenda is our business office with Kona. Is she online?
She is.
I am here. Can you guys hear me?
Oh, yes.
Okay, perfect. I will wait for the report to come up.
Thank you, just one second.
Yep. All right, there it is. It's pretty short and sweet. This is as of July thirty first. So only one month, we've received twelve percent of our operating revenue. Last year, we had received sixteen percent, and that was due to a large timber revenue payment we had received, but twelve percent is definitely more standard for this time of year. We have spent three percent of our operating expenditures, which is the same percent we were at last year for this month. Other than that, there's not a whole lot going on quite yet. I do have another report to, for twenty-three, twenty-four after the board. Okay, it's this one.
Did we have any questions for Kona? We're good. Kona, if you want to continue.
I think, I move that we approve the general fund revenue expenditures for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. I'll second that.
We have a motion for approval. And second, any discussions? Okay, can we get a vote on? All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero? Okay, Kona?
Okay, so she is going to pull up our unaudited, unadjusted twenty-three, twenty-four numbers. So these numbers are not yet official because they have not been audited and year-end closing journal entries have not been performed. However, I just wanted to provide an update on where we are likely to end up. If they do change, they shouldn't change significantly. So we ended up collecting a hundred and three percent of our budgeted revenue, and we spent ninety-five percent of our operating expenditures. Our ending fund balance is twenty-five percent, a little bit over that, or roughly four point five million. We underspent our operating expenditures by five point one three percent, and we spent zero of our contingency dollars. The auditors are currently performing our interim audit, which is kind of weird, being that the year's over. Usually interim's done mid-year, but due to the shortage of auditors, this is kind of becoming the norm. So while we're having our interim done, they're kind of working on our final at the same time, but they will dig more into the final sometime in October, which is hopefully when I could produce you guys more final numbers. Does the board have any questions on that report?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
Is, I have to go through the conference, and I'll talk about that in a little bit later, and was just listening to all kinds of things when I was looking over this, I just wanted to say kudos to superintendent and to Q, because we're at a hundred and three percent of our revenue and ninety-five percent of our expenditures. I understand that that is unaudited, but still, those are great numbers. So I highly give those, and I just wanted to say something.
Okay, thank you.
You guys.
Thanks.
Does that require board action? Correct. Because it's on.
Yeah, I don't think you have to take board action on this one.
Five C here is the new checking account for the bond funds, and that will require board action.
We just, just found out this was a requirement a week or so ago, so we got it on here. Kona's done everything at the bank we need to. We close on the sale of the bonds on Thursday, so that's how we're funded. So if you prove this tonight, we now Thursday, Kona will get the account open. Did I leave anything out there, Kona?
Well, I'm just that you and I are, will be the signers on it, just like our general checking.
Okay.
Can we get a motion to approve our checking accounts?
Actually, I have a question first. So did, did we, is this new from the last bond, or do I just not remember this?
We did have a separate checking account for our previous bond. I don't know if they required board minutes or not.
Okay.
I, I wasn't here when that account was opened, or I wasn't in this position, so I, I can't say whether or not you guys had to take action on it, but the bank is now requiring anytime a school district opens any sort of account, that the board has to take action on it and acknowledge who is a signer on it.
Well, it's, it's been a while, so.
Yeah, yeah, two thousand fourteen, so.
I move that we approve the new account, checking account for the bond funds.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We, okay, we have five to zero?
It's been quite a year.
Okay. Other reports, and we have Ms. Marshall?
Sorry, trap, you see? I have an official report, but we'll get this in practice. Um, I, I don't have an official report, but an update. We are just plugging along, everybody's working really hard. If you guys haven't seen or felt the buzz about the buildings, all I'm gonna have been back tomorrow, we have like our first work session where staff are coming in extra hours, we're doing a five-hour equity workshop to help each building rep feel prepared for what they're doing in their buildings throughout the year. We've had sixteen teachers participating throughout the summer on a reading training, that's still going through October. We are organizing all of our classified assistance, trauma and core practices, relationships, dealing with behavior management through a project at U of O. We have, our elementary team is starting year two of the Boarding Response to Instruction and Intervention. It's our first year with our new science, our second year with our math, and our third year with our ELA, and this year is health evaluation. So that's one thing that I'm working on right now, is like getting all the different updates from the state. So like today, I forwarded our middle school, high school principals. There's another, like, mini lesson we have to teach on cochlear aids and substance abuse, and just little things that the state has put out since our last adoption. We're trying to get organized on all the have-tos, and then we'll start working on that, and I'll get you guys a calendar, kind of like what that progression looks like. SIA will be huge this year, I think I already kind of mentioned that, because what's happening is we're at the end of our four-year window, so we'll do an annual performance review. I have to like do this narrative, submit it to ODE, lessons learned, what went great, what were the challenges? But then the big lift for us this year will be creating our application for our twenty-five through twenty-nine. So that'll be like all new engagement, tying together what we've done, what do we want to keep, are there things that we want to change? That would be a lot. And so what you guys will hear from me here in a little bit is, I think in November will be kind of the big report month for me, because I'll do our quarter four SMA report and our integrated plan annual report, and give you an update on what the twenty-five to twenty-seven sales were. That's all, I got it. This is, I like this, I'm gonna say this. Those are, those are very formal.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, onto Mr. Carpenter.
I have three things to touch on. First one, Piper Shandler, remember there are bond underwriters that have helped work with us two, three months on selling these bonds. I'll be posting this document on the district website, the dedicated bond page. This is just some posted pricing talking points, so. Eight points here that'll, again, just be on the document on that page. The district sold sixteen point one one five million in voter-approved bonds on August eighth, the sale worked well, the overall demand for the bonds outstripping supply. In fact, district bonds had nearly four orders from every maturity, meaning that our underwriter, Piper Shandler, was able to reduce the interest rate rates over the initial offering, and investors were willing to pay a premium price in order to receive the bonds. As a result, the district will receive approximately two million additional proceeds that can be used on projects in accordance with the voter-approved ballot title. The stellar results were due in large part to the district's receipt of a credit, credit rating upgrade to AA three from Moody's ratings process. The district had previously been rated A one by Moody's. In their summary, Moody's highlighted the strong financial position supported by stable enrollment. Moody's specifically noted strengthening of the district's financial position in recent years as the result of conservative budgeting, increased revenues resulting from stable enrollment, and prudent use of one-time pandemic relief funds. Moody's also noted the healthy, growing Eugene Springfield area local economy, and finally, the district is expected to close on the bonds and receive the funds on August twenty-seventh. So just some comments from them, and again, I'll get those posted. Second thing, any questions on any of that? Second thing, Ms. Snyder couldn't be here for free tonight, so she sent me two things she wanted to touch on. One, just a reminder about the Papa's Pizza fundraiser for their student scholarship, and I printed copies, we put them there, it's this third day, if anybody's interested or willing. And then two, for you, we'd like to thank everyone who worked hard throughout the summer to get the buildings as well as paperwork ready. When teachers and students return in the next couple of weeks, we appreciate your efforts. So that's from Freea. And just a reminder, first day off, new teachers come back this Wednesday. I meet with them in the year, we have twelve, I think twelve. And all staff returns on the twenty-sixth. Of course, all of you don't have to come, but you're certainly invited the morning of the twenty-sixth. You can come all day if you want it. But breakfast is seven fifteen, eight fifteen, and if you were gonna stay a little bit, the welcome kind of intro to new staff, things will happen from eight fifteen to eight forty, and then we'll break out and go into different groups and activities throughout the day, but if you're interested in that first kind of hour, seven forty-five, eight forty-five, would be the best time, if you wanted to come. And that's all I have.
Any discussion around that, questions? All right, so we're on to our discussion items, and the next topic is our board's status.
This, this was asked to be put on the agenda, so this is just basically to remind us and get a count on the record in our minutes, that remember, we heard from OSBA, they'll be pushing the legislature to refix around this, so it complies with ethics regulations, and we anticipate that happening in the legislative session in the spring, so that then in the spring, we could bring this up again, have a vote on how we're gonna proceed in the bridge.
But we'll continue to not do anything?
All districts in Oregon kind of cease fire on this at that directive until the next legislative session.
Did we get to make a motion on this? To table it? No?
I think we did the last time.
Well, maybe a year ago, when we decided we were gonna kind of wait a year. Now I think we're just continuing to wait.
All right. Confirm board work session dates.
So, yeah, we talked about the three goals of the board, which approved later, discussing then approved later. As you recall, your first goal around continuous PD, I would focus, with a focus on culture and climate of the board, the goals and responsibilities of the board. I've been in communication with Kristin Miles, who we've been working with. She identified, I gave her our board meeting schedule, she identified three dates, if we wanted to do three, I'd suggest at least two, and no more than three. The three days she's available are in October, December, and March. I did the twenty-first of October, the twenty, the sixteenth of December, and the seventeenth of March. So things to decide here, I think what we talked about in the retreat was have five-thirty work sessions on those days. So what I need to hear from you tonight is to approve all three of those, or identify two of them, and adopt those as work session. There does need to be board action, because we're gonna change our board calendar and have those as work sessions. And then, depending on how many we choose, then in the coming days, I'll maybe get a list from Kristin on her ideas, and I'll maybe send you individual emails, or do some kind of informal poll or something, and just pick what topics. I know she can come in and just talk about a topic, she could, she could, she mentioned doing a book, discussing the book, that kind of thing. So what I'm looking for today is picking dates.
Should we decide if we want in two or three?
Well, here's the thing, if we say that we want to do three, and after one or two, we decide, this is awesome.
I can never hold the three dates and tell her for sure we'll do the first two, and then one, keep it open for us, we'll decide later.
So this is not, this is a little beyond the topic, but I like the idea of having a book.
Okay.
But I also like either to just have short check-ins on some chapters, or in March, have the discussion around the whole book.
Okay.
Well, yes, but I also feel like I want to have time to not only read it, but digest it.
Maybe she could even do a part where, you know, we have a chapter check-in at the beginning of a work session, or some other topic, I'll mention that to her.
Are you able to tell us what the book is?
I don't know what that is.
Oh, can you find that?
Oh, I think she, I think.
She's probably got lots of books.
But she doesn't have one in particular.
I don't think so, but she may.
I think she mentioned a leadership book, critical conversations or something like that, but I only remember that because.
And if people have ideas of topics you want to email me to, you know, have her focus on or activities, feel free to send them. I'll, at some point this week, I'll email her and have her, maybe the best way to do it's have her propose what she thinks to be the best three activities.
Yeah, and we could actually, you know, do our own. Go.
I assume those, whatever the discussions will be, will be centered around the goals that we have.
Right, they'll be centered around year goal number one, PD on culture and climate, and roles and responsibilities of the board. So someone could make a motion to approve those three dates, I'll get that work started.
I'll make a motion to approve the three work session dates.
We have a motion and second, and any discussion additional? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Please do.
Aye.
Okay, five to zero?
So we'll get that printed up on the board schedule, and update the one online.
Next topic is that, adopt and approve superintendent goals, identify checking dates requiring board action.
Yeah, so this is what I sent you a couple weeks ago. I didn't get any suggestion tweaks, so those are the two goals, stakeholder engagement, academic achievement. At the bottom, I identified the two check-in dates being November, February. At the end of regular session, we'll go in, we'll, you know, talk to Kristin about that process, what's the best way to do that, but the check-in dates will be in executive session in November and February. So if I don't hear any tweaks to the goals, then I just take a motion to approve of this as they were presented. Does everybody have a copy of this?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve or set the two annuals for twenty-four, twenty-five, and the two check-in dates in November and February, as proposed.
We'll get a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have five to zero on that? Next topic is our exit survey.
Yeah, so we have another topic we talked about at the retreat. Based on Kristin's recommendation, I reframed all that stuff and sent it to you in a way that's more summative. And then I also, on two questions that fit well, added a scale, kind of a one to five kind of deal, and there are already a couple questions like that. So I've made, I guess, what we're looking for here is board action to, to provide that information to the board in that summative format, which I converted it all, so you'll see now what that will look like, and that the board will get this in July.
I'll make a motion to approve the exit survey.
We have a simple.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second, any discussion?
So, first of all, I'd like to say thank you, because I love the new format. Thank you very much. And the grading system that you added, zero to five, that is great. The only thing I was looking at with this is one time a year in July, that's fine, is mentioned as a summary and choosing, and what I wanted to talk to you about is having an unedited version of it.
That would be going back to what we had before. So what, if my memory is ever right, Kristen suggested was not to send us the raw data, that's what you're asking for. Summarize it, and that's what he's proposing, and she sent us a sample of what it would look like based on the info we already received.
No, this is actual information from the surveys.
So are you talking about the, the questions that have this, you know, zero to five, or are you talking about the individual comments?
I'm, I'm actually talking about the whole, how many questions? Do you remember how many questions are on that survey? Seventeen, eighteen?
I want to say mid-teens, but I don't.
So I'm talking about the whole thing. So what the proposal is to, for us to give the survey, survey information, but again, in a summarized form.
Right. What are you asking for?
So I'm asking for an unedited form.
You just need a form?
No, 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 not a blank form.
Not a blank form?
No, he'll, he'll do just what he's doing. He'll summarize it, but he was going to sub, no, no, no. He will print it out, but he was going to summarize it, and then pick some things to put in, things like that.
Well, I mean the.
That you would have put in all.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, kind of what I did, if you looked at the two that I said, I didn't edit it to, you know, there was, I don't think it will edits, there was just summarizations of the type of topics that were discussed.
But you did say something about not putting everything in there.
Well, you're talking about.
That was what Kristin told us to.
Yeah, from, from our retreat, the discussion was not send us that raw data, wherein you can identify probably who put what where, and to summarize that information and send it out. So he's gonna look at the entire report and give you an overview of what the feedback was. Right? Which is what you are, we are agreeing to, but now you're saying you wanted. Which is what you are, we are agreeing to, but now you're saying you wanted the raw data.
But we'll be, we, so, the exit survey will be presented to us in summarized form, as we, I thought we agreed at the, at the retreat. But because we are going to receive
Those other target surveys?
Targeted survey, information from targeted surveys, thank you. That, that we're gonna, he's go. Superintendent Carpenter is going to send OSBA emails of various constituent groups, including, including people that, within the district, correct? And then we'll receive that information as well.
To give you, what I thought we had talked about, and again, this was OSBA's recommendation, not, not appearance, that, let me give you an example. In the, in the surveys that we came out, because remember the exit survey that I created, there's a couple of questions that certainly give feedback to the superintendent, but a lot of it is about their supervisor.
Right.
And so let's say someone on their employee, on their exit survey said, my supervisor is a knucklehead, I hate him. I'm not going to give you that quote, I'm going to, in my summary, had concerns about their supervisor, didn't like him. You know, that's all, that's all I'm doing, how I present all that data to you in that summative form, so basically, you should be able to look at the two versions that I sent you and see that it really gives you the exact same information, just not direct language quotes. And then, that's really just from, the only people that are doing that, just to remind everyone, is people that leave us for whatever reason, tired, left, quit, moved away, but it's part of superintendent evaluation, which we'll start probably talking about November, December to get that out. January, February, so you have it in April when you're doing mine. We'll identify, you know, teacher leadership, classified leadership, administrators, partners within the district that I work with, the city, TSP, parents that are on various committees in the district. They'll get some kind of survey from Kristin, she'll manage that, it'll go out to all these people, all the data will go back to her. You'll get that information in some form, I've never seen it done, so it's not.
Do that make sense?
So, we understand that the exit survey will not be used as part of the superintendent evaluation. I think we need to make that clear, it is just an overview of what the.
Well, I mean, just the timing of it, it doesn't really fit in July, I think you're getting information, so in your brain, certainly that can be a part of what you're thinking about the superintendent, but it's not a, it's not a formal piece that would check in this box as my evaluation, but certainly it's information about the district.
And actually, as soon as we said that, as soon as Kristin said that we could do targeted surveys, then I was really good. I, I just didn't, I just didn't want anything unedited, but I understand now about some of those.
So, I'm looking for board action to. Oh, okay.
We have a motion, so we'll take a vote on.
Are you ready?
Okay. All in favor of that exit?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a five to zero. Okay, board goals, which also require the.
Yeah, I had sent these to you, we developed them at the retreat, I got no edits back, just to review. First one is around PD with our primarily thing, with our primary action item being these three work sessions. Excuse me, our second one is around using data to identify and prioritize student needs and hold ourselves accountable for meeting student learning expectations. Our action plan includes presentations and the tracking of all the data that Ms. Marshall will do, her presentation's three times a year. It'll happen during board meetings, and, you know, it was really ongoing work, spending time on that, you know, weekly if not daily throughout the year to collect that data. Lots of, on that action plan alone, I could probably list 30 things we're doing, but it's really about these presentations to the board or bringing this data to you, those longitudinal growth performance target presentations will happen. This year, we changed it a little bit in November, February, and June. Hoping the November one will have all the data from previous year kind of finalized. Before, we did it in July thinking we would kind of have it there, well, we don't really, so it'll be, February will kind of be beginning of state testing kind of update, we'll have some data on ninth grade on track. June, we might have some preliminary data, and then November will be the final data from the year before. That's pretty accurate, so that's the second goal, and the third goal is we'll continue to find meaningful ways within our authority to engage in the CEP from stakeholders, help the board make informed decisions. So, those are the proposed 2425 board goals that we've been looking to adopt.
We have the motion.
I move that we accept the 2425 preliminary board goals.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero.
Okay, next item, and this went over already, so just to reiterate, no action needed here, is that these presentations on the growth goals will take place in November, February, and June.
Board operating agreement.
Board operating agreement, we adopt this every year. Past several years, it's been 15 items, during the retreat, there was discussion about adding an item. I know there's, maybe there's going to be some discussion around the exact language, but whatever we adopt, I think the goal here for the 16th item here is is that board members will commit to voting, and abstentions will be rare and in pieces where, you know, there's some particular reason that I need to say.
So, I think that you and Kristin or you and someone from OSBA worked to nail down the, if we've already.
Oh, yeah.
Made a motion and a second, how does that get tabled?
Right.
And.
I sent that document.
And that's, and since that's a possibility, except where there are, it's fairly, if, if it doesn't, if the, if the agenda item doesn't get voted on in that meeting, it's going to have repercussions down the, down the road. So, I wonder if we, if there's some way that we could, we could have that on the agenda or, so, this this needs to be acted on this month, so that we can beforehand be sure that we are fully informed and have asked all our questions ahead of time, so that we come in and we're prepared to, to vote yea or nay, I mean, with discussion.
Are you, are you wanting, if I understand you correctly, to have some indication on the agenda that says this has to be action that we need, basically?
I, I guess I don't want to go so far as to say this has to be voted on in this meeting, because, you know, there could be circumstances where someone just isn't comfortable voting. But I do kind of wonder if, not kind of, I wonder if there is some way to just say, this is, this is a, this is a very timely item.
Or, is to ask, or it makes the board any question?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
I don't think a lot of things that.
And if people feel like, to me, the most common thing would be, I just don't have enough information, so whatever the action item is, board members will vote five to oh no, or four to one no, and then, okay, I gotta go back and do some more work to give you the correct information to. So I don't see very many instances where people just couldn't vote, if you don't like what you hear, then it's vote no, and okay, I will bring it up next time. I suppose there could be instances where, well, we got to know tonight, because.
I guess, so there were a couple of times this year where I felt like the item that, that was on the table needed to be acted on in that meeting, or else there were going to be delays down the road.
And that, that will come up occasionally, like I'll use an example tonight about the checking account, just found out about that last week. I couldn't have you say to that point, and I could, but then, I don't know, they'd hold on to that money for a while until next month when we came back, so items like that do come up where there needs to be action. On that night, we tried to.
Is, so a couple of things with this, so it is Gary's job to get us those materials in time again. But if we cannot as a board come to an agreement, okay, what happens then is it gets tabled. And it continues, give me the memo please, and it keeps getting tabled until we can come to a consensus. Now, what can happen is, let's say we go for three months and we just can't get to this. We can have a work session, we can have something where we can all come together, talk, discuss things. When it comes down to it, the best thing is going to be for the kids in our district. So I can't see why five people can't come together to make those decisions.
So, maybe this is just a semantics, but if, if the board, if each individual board member has, feels like they, they know yea or nay, then we're going to vote on it. But if a board member feels like they just don't have enough information, and then that, in that case.
Yeah, so there's two options, this is, I was just reviewing this document that I said, withdrawing a motion and tabling a motion. So to withdraw a motion, board member Gary makes a motion for ABC, and board member Andrea, let's say, seconds it. The board chair is starting to restate the motion, but isn't quite through restating it. I can speak up and say, you know what, I'd like to withdraw the motion after the discussion. So, the way I read, the way I think that occurs is first and second is there's discussion.
Before we take the final vote.
And I think Barbara, in correct format, would say, okay, we've got a first and a second to do AB, before she says do ABC, because maybe I've heard the discussion and thought, you know, maybe we need more time, I can withdraw. The second one will be tabled, the board has a motion on the table, so let's say Lisa makes a motion, and we know we want to take action, but maybe some other board members during the discussion feel like they lack the information needed, or for some other reason it's being hindered, moved towards a vote, a motion to postpone to a certain time to be considered. Once that motion is made, that can be debated and then voted on, but not the motion to which it applies to. Once that vote happens to table it, that passes, then it's tabled. So, let's say Lisa makes a motion, it's seconded, there's conversation, Mark makes a motion to table it. We discuss, it's seconded, we discuss that, we take a vote, it fails. Oh, we're going back, we're acting on that motion, or it passes, okay, we're tabling this as an initial motion until the Mark updates it, looks suggested.
Okay, so, that I think that, so, I, I just want to throw out some slightly different language that kind of says the same thing. Except in situations where there is a conflict of interest, board members will make every effort to refrain from abstaining from a vote as it can send a message to other members of the board, the district, and the community that there is a lack of interest in, for preparation for the agenda item. Is that more acceptable language?
Are you talking about, are you talking about the only language, or take away the second sentence?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Are you talking about that's the only language for number 16?
That is.
Or take away number two, the second sentence?
I think the second sentence is good.
So I just wanted to add what you just said? You can't do what?
So, so we cannot say that we are not going to abstain, we cannot say we're only going to do a vote of yea or nay. It is in Robert's rule, which is parliamentary procedure, that board members can vote yea, nay, or abstain. And there's actually six reasons why a board member can vote for abstention.
I don't think you ever said that, did it? I mean, you're not allowed to abstain? I don't think you ever said that.
Yeah, except in situations where there is a conflict of interest, so maybe that's where the.
What are the six reasons, Lisa, that you're on the air researchers?
Okay, so the first one is conflict of interest. The second one is fear of having a lone or minority opinion. Number three is when it disagrees with the board members. Number four is internal conflict on an issue. Number five is lack of sufficient information, and number six is lack of focus on board activities.
So, I can see the conflict, I can see not enough info, and what's the second to last one you read?
Lack of sufficient information.
Lack of info, what's the last one you read?
Lack of focus on board activities.
So it's on that person's preparation, whatever, so I can see those three as a reason to abstain.
Oh, these are all Robert's rules.
But they're not law, we, we don't have to use Robert's rules, first of all, and Robert's rules is not the law, so we don't have to go by what that says.
And so do we not go back parliamentary procedure?
Sure, we, we use some parliamentary procedure, we don't use it to the exact.
Right, I got it.
Where it is, or are you using the Robert's rules to exact?
I don't think we've had problems with, it's rare that somebody's abstained, I think we want to.
Take the second sentence away from voting, I think that it covers it.
Yep.
So we, because there have been rare situations in the last seven years that some have abstained, which is twice, so.
Well, I think there's a difference.
Actually, that's.
Seven years?
There, well.
It's about on the board? I don't remember any of that.
Or you want the board with Director Holden?
No?
Okay. Yeah, I think it's a, I mean, in my mind, what we just want to have, we just want to have a yes or no or abstention. I'll defer to you guys to abstain for appropriate reasons, we just don't want silence. And it's okay to vote no, like, some of the, maybe that's what it says, but I don't agree with that, I don't, like, the one you talked about.
If it was a direct conflict, the person wouldn't be able to participate in discussion or vote.
You're hiring somebody, a relative, but if you just have, if you just disagree with other board members, well, that's what we're here for. You know, vote no, I disagree, that hopefully came out in the discussion, and you're just voting no. Regardless, the item that we're adding, so it has two sentences, and what I'm hearing maybe is we'll consider eliminating the second sentence, but the first sentence is, board members will commit to voting for or against all actions proposed to the board are in rare, and, I need to change that language, and that word, and in rare situation, an abstention is acceptable.
Okay, and then, whose opinion is a rare situation?
I, well, I got to trust you.
Yes, it's on the person, it's on the board member. I mean, they should be rare. If you're going to abstain or then abstain, it's acceptable.
Yeah, I, I have that right to abstain.
I don't think we.
It's not saying that we're going to.
We can, the, the person abstaining, I think it was the silence that was the problem when we didn't, we had a vote yes or no and then no answer, so I don't think the issue necessarily is, but using abstain versus saying no, you know, that shouldn't be the way we do it, if you're abstaining because you don't have enough info, you're having a conflict of interest. That's, I would say, more unacceptable reason to abstain versus like, I'm afraid to say no, so I'm just going to abstain. You know what I mean, so.
No, I agree with that.
So I think if we are in agreement, we have three options to choose from. So I think if we are in agreement, we have three options to choose from. Right? Yay, nay, or abstain. And the person who chooses to abstain. Has to trust their reasoning as to the reason for abstaining without needing to disclose it.
And I think hopefully it comes out. When I'm with Gary's abstaining from something. Here's where, here's where it would frustrate me, is if Barbara made a motion. Lisa seconded it. Any discussion? There's silence. And then abstain. Well, we should have had some discussions, at least some kind of sense why, why I'm abstaining. I just don't have enough information, or there's a conflict or whatever. I bet it has to be that way. It can be dead silence, and I can still abstain. I just think it helps everybody be more informed about Gary's opinion. When I go to a state and I've, you know, stated. You can then articulate, you know, I've articulated in a way that you maybe understand why it is that I'm abstaining.
Well, I agree with that also.
Yeah, okay. So modification to number sixteen is.
Take the second sentence away.
Okay.
And then change the language on the first sentence.
I don't think it needs to be changed.
I think it just says.
Except the R and the and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the only thing, the R and the and.
In rare situations, abstention is acceptable. So the sentence will read, board members will commit to voting for or against all actions provided to the board, and in rare situations, an abstention is acceptable. So we're just having a discussion now, so if somebody makes a motion.
Do you. So do you. I'm reading your body language. And I, so. Do you. I think that we can, we've all agreed that this second sentence is gone. So do you. Feel okay with the first sentence, with the and instead of the R?
Well, yeah, I agree. I actually think that one's wrong.
No, I, I mean, I, that's not what I meant.
But no, I, I'm actually still not comfortable, but we've had discussion and we can vote.
Okay.
Yeah, I, no, I'm not comfortable with it.
What do you propose?
What, do I propose?
Yeah, for that sentence instead. You're not going for that, what you propose.
Well, I thought I'd send an email to everybody.
Well, let's get it on record.
Okay. What I said was, board members will commit to voting for or against all actions. Proposed to the board, including abstention when appropriate.
You said an acceptable, right? That's what your sentence?
That's what I said.
You said appropriate?
Yes, you're right.
Okay. So which ones?
At this moment, we'll do.
Appropriate.
Appropriate.
So what's the difference between that and the first sentence of that, that targeted down there?
So can we just change sixteen from the exact to appropriate?
I'm not sure what the difference is.
I know.
You mean, really, same, exactly the same thing?
Well, and then to take out that rare situ, rare situations. So I would say board members will commit to voting for or against all actions. Proposed to the board and. And when abstention is acceptable.
Why would you want to take the rare situation out there?
That, that's an opinion. That's rare situations.
Well, it is rare though. I mean, that's a fact. It's rare that there's an abstention.
But it's part of it.
Excuse me?
It is part of it. It is part of the voting process.
Right, but it's rare.
That's okay.
Okay, well, it's okay then, why you want to sleep in there?
We are legal in there.
The rare part?
But we're taking out the rare situations.
No, rare situation is rare that it, that it's, that it's, that it happens. That's what I'm saying, that's a fact. So why would we take that out?
It may be not be a fact we can say, though maybe it will be something that we will still think need to abstain.
But it's still, right, but it's still gonna be rare. I mean, how many votes did we have tonight? There wasn't a single abstention. I mean, so if we take that times vote meetings, then that'd be very rare.
You know, my thing is that I, I just think it's, it's dangerous. It's a dangerous precedent by allowing the board members to be able to vote. And not allowing them to vote a certain way.
Well, we're not saying that.
Not saying that.
And what I'm saying is, what I'm just asking for the words rare situation to be eliminated from there.
I don't think it needs to be.
Okay.
Why do you think it needs to stay?
Because I think in the future, when we have people on the, on the, on the board, and maybe there's no history behind why it's on there. Then it, it, it allows them to see that, oh, it's rare that I would do this. Why is it rare? They would ask a question. But it makes, makes it to where.
It's equal, unequal, equal to yes, no, abstain, yes, no.
That would be the reason to leave it there.
Or it's a no vote.
It's not an abstention. Just like we were talking about the meeting.
It does not count as a, it does not count as an affirmative or a negative.
Right.
Okay.
So it's not a no vote?
Okay.
But I don't say that it's not.
I mean, it's not, it's not a yes or no. Never really would come into play here, but if we had, you had a nine-person board, for example. And you had four, you had five, you know, abstentions, or let's say we had a vote with four abstentions and one yes, it's passing.
So if we get a two yes, two no, one abstain, what happens? A tie vote?
So the usual majority, we don't use like two-thirds or anything like that, right? So if we were to use two-thirds voting, then it could play into.
I think it's a good, like, you're three people abstaining from the vote, and two people are yes, it's passing.
But it's rare that we have those, so it's not too bad.
It is, it is rare.
And that's why it's important, I think, you know, for us, as Mark says, without the history. We have some people who have been here a long time and have that history. If you just have the three option, yay, abstain, I mean, I think it's a normal. Voting option. I mean, you don't want it to be used every month. You want it to be used under special circumstances. Right? Whatever that circumstance is for that person who is voting. So indicating that it's not the norm may give you more. Reason to dig deeper and come up with a yes or a no, so to speak.
Yeah, if we, I mean, I tend to agree with Mark on this, simply because if we just think about it over the course of the year. If we had equal number of abstentions as we had yes or no's or anything, we're close to that. Then really there's a problem. I'm not communicating well, I'm not getting the information.
Exactly.
Abstentions should, probably occur every year once or twice, but they should be rare. And to me, this points out that board member has a right. I'm not gonna judge anyone if they're abstaining. I might feel like I'm doing a bad job getting you information so you can vote. This identifies, you got three, you got three options. And we're not placing any judgment on if someone is abstaining. We're hoping that it's, they need to be able to justify that. Never mind, you don't need to convince us that it's the right thing for anybody else. Just Gary, the individual board member, if I think it's right for me to abstain. Rest of the board members should support that.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, I make a motion that we accept, that we adopt the board agreement. Board operating agreement as written with exception of the second sentence in number sixteen motion.
Delete it.
Delete that, right?
You have a second?
I have a second. Any further discussion? Can we get a vote?
So. Did I, did I get it in there?
No.
I do feel like it's really important that. This pass unanimously. And if there is. A chance that it won't. I would like to. I don't know if I can do this, but I would like to make a motion to table it.
Well, I think you can vote in that term. So if you wanted to table it, you can table it now. That'd be my interpretation.
So we have to write.
Sure.
Um, why do you want it to be written?
Because this is a.
An agreement for us.
A board operating agreement.
I'd say how.
Nothing, we don't, this is a document, we don't have to have, right, we could not ever do this. It's just one that we think. Helps us operate smoothly.
Talk about the agreement.
Yeah, the agreement. Not something that's required by law, but it's something that most school boards do. Just so everybody understands, you know, the playing field that we're on and how it helps things. It's a guiding force, basically. I don't know. I see Andrea's point. It would be weird to adopt an agreement that we're all.
Not an agreement.
Essentially, six of us buy into it, two of us don't buy into it.
There, okay.
All right, so we'll take a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Five to zero with that edit?
Okay, I will make a tweak, and then this will get voted, posted on the district website. Thank you.
Good discussion, guys. Thank you. All right. And one second read it?
Yeah, these were just standard, these were ones we wanted to get in front of you quickly because they're new rules. First reading was last month on these bidding requirements. We're gonna have a lot of this stuff going on in the next couple of months. So hopefully you've read those. I haven't received any feedback over the last month, but we're looking at updating policy DJC. We have a current DJC, and we're just replacing it.
What's the major change?
What's that?
Was there major, major?
It was mostly around the thresholds for different requirements.
I approve that we approve the. DJC fitting requirements. I'll second. Thank you.
Any discussions? Here are none? We have a vote on this second read it?
Aye.
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 Five to zero? Okay, personal. License, employees' resignation, new hire transfer. We have none that is done.
No.
No.
None new hires. At least on the license side, all of our teachers have been in place from since the last year. Lots of coaches and stuff, well. We had three coaching jobs open today. One. We might be adding a third volleyball team, so we posted that job today. And a assistant, head baseball coach and assistant, he's an assistant football. He resigned, so those jobs posted.
I think one or two sub teams, you know, girls, just one or two. Just getting heavy volleyball.
So again, the not licensed reporters, just for information, those actions needs to be taken.
Anyway, I would.
The only late item I wanted to mention is, like, we didn't include it on this agenda, but it'll start being on the September agenda. Remember, at the last, at our retreat, we talked about adding kind of a sharing of what you've done, whatever, so we'll start that in September. For board members to share maybe within the games or buildings or things a bit in the community. We'll include that in September go vote.
All right, and we have a list of registrations, student registration, August twenty, that's tomorrow. Bill tomorrow to the twenty-second. And first day of school, September third, kindergarten first day, September ninth. And then open house, please stand below.
Yes, all the open houses have been scheduled. Those are the dates for each building. The elementaries will happen both on the same night. High school a few days later, and middle school the next week.
Okay. Anything else?
So Lisa and I were just talking about, I think that. So I noticed this, but we kind of skipped by it a little bit. Can you go back up on the agenda, Bree? Seven F?
Oh, yeah, seven F.
That was, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
That was my mistake.
We know it was bad.
What I meant to have included there was have Bree and Lisa share from their school board. Conference she went to.
Okay. Do you want to share?
I'll share.
Yeah, the wording on that was wrong. It was my, my fault. The item was to be, to just hear from Lisa and Bree who went to the conference, anything they got or want to share. How was it?
It was wonderful. I have to say this. I came out of there, first of all, I love conferences. I just, I do. But I came out of there, just, I did a lot of listening. And we're doing really, really good. You know, and then when I came home, I got this, as far as the extensions and the revenues and everything. And so I just want to say kudos to you guys, because you are really, really doing good in this district. There's, there's districts out there, you're gonna know this, that are not doing well at, at all. Financially, enrollment, Salem Kaiser, is that? So they did, did they get a bond? Is that what they got? But they're not closing.
Oh, a little, a little, it wasn't Salem Kaiser, but a little district outside of Salem, I can't think of the name. They didn't pass their bond, they were closing their district. It was gonna get absorbed by maybe Salem Kaiser and adjacent ones, but.
Wow.
And?
Might have been. Oh, Jervis, it was Jervis.
Jervis, that's one of the others, right?
But they, they failed seventeen times in a row or something like that, I think. But they passed.
Oh, wow.
Stayed.
That's great.
You know, besides loving the conferences, because they're so informative, I learned so much. I just really came away just saying, gosh, we're really doing good.
You appreciate that, Smar, right?
Oh, my gosh. And then, this is just me, but I was trying to figure out my levels and everything, and I'm happy to say. That I'm going with silver and bronze, and now working on the gold level. And that was a surprise.
Yeah.
I thought it was working on bronze.
One thing, as a late item, I wanted to get on your radar. Yeah, just because it's become a hot topic around Oregon, you've probably been reading lots of articles. Not something we're looking at doing here, but I imagine as the year goes on, you might start hearing about more banning of cell phones. It's happening in more and more schools. For the public, like us, we go this past week, Salem Kaiser considering. So again, not something we're doing here right now, but.
Can we?
That's great. Have you heard any language in regards to that here?
Well, administrators would love it. And then, yeah, teachers would love it. Parents would be split. I don't, I don't mean split fifty-fifty, but I mean, there'd certainly be some that think that. You know, that wouldn't be in support of that. I don't know what that, how that falls, I don't know. We haven't really done any survey on it, but it is, and there, you know, we have. We do have rules in place. For example, with the middle school, they strengthened their language a little bit. Last year in that they can't be, they need to be in their locker. They can use them at lunchtime before school. They can not take them to class and have them out in class. At the high school, they can have them on their person, but they need to be silent. Put away. But a lot of schools now we're going to, they're literally injecting them into a sealed box. They can't even open it up until they leave school. There's, again, not something we're looking at, but it might come up sometime in the future.
My kids still keep your phone on silent. You're not in school, you're not in charge, you're not in court.
Yeah.
No, silent.
Is it just, is it just make it silent?
No, because it affects when they're gaming. It interrupts their gaming time, so I.
Bree also kind of interrupted too. Bree also attended the conference.
I was very, very informative. I was the, I was kind of outed as the newbie. In my particular group, so it was, but it was great. It was, it was very awesome. I got to kind of. See what other schools do, which I think is interesting, because depending on the sides, it really, really makes a difference. And we, I think we do a great job.
There's a lot of drama out there, and we are pretty good with the size.
Okay. It's all a testament to what we do every day and, you know, with the school admin and superintendents, so. Gotta be grateful for leadership. So, all right, if nothing else, we will call it a night, and thank you guys for being here.
Thank you.
End of discussion. End of discussion.